Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, April 28, 2020. This meeting is being held virtually due to the COVID epidemic and is being broadcast live on WCAT's Facebook livestream. It will be recorded and posted for viewing at any time. I'd like to call media order and begin by our Pledge of Allegiance. You should have a flag any second. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our mission statement is the vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences to meet their individual needs and interests. We have kept our emails open right up to the edge of the meeting here, and we had no comments in from the public for public participation. I've confirmed that with Mr. Lyons as well. And next, we would love to hear from our student council. Adriana and Lilly.
So for tonight, I thought it was really important for me to write down all my feelings, so I'm gonna be reading from that. Adriana and I, along with all of our classmates, are obviously so disappointed with the news of school closing for the remainder of the year. I truly don't think words can express how sad my fellow classmates and I are that we will never all be together again in the high school building, but we are trying to stay positive. While we are still very emotional, we are also hopeful about the future of senior events. This afternoon, our administration hosted a Zoom meeting for the class of 2020 in which approximately 85 students participated. The focus of the call was the fate of specific senior events like prom and graduation. Overwhelmingly, students are hopeful that there will be an actual in-person celebration of both prom and graduation. While we all understand the challenges that this unprecedented time of uncertainty presents, we believe these milestones warrant much more than a virtual celebration. A unanimous takeaway from the meeting was that we, as students, would much rather postpone prom and graduation until later in the summer, rather than host them virtually as planned in early June. For example, a drive-by graduation was suggested, and for the most part, it was not received well by students. We felt that this idea lacks a sense of togetherness as a class. Students were able to voice these opinions prior to the Zoom call through a survey that was posted by our class officers. I just want to end with how we are counting on the administration to exhaust every resource to come up with creative, innovative solutions to hold these events in as memorable a way as possible. We are willing to do whatever we can to make this happen.
I did the same thing. I wrote it down on my notes, too, so don't mind if I'm looking down. I agree completely with what Lilly just shared with you all. It has been a pretty tough couple of days after the closure of school and spring sports for the rest of the school year. Lilly already touched upon how our focus as a senior class is to just have those monumental class activities in person and not virtually. Now focusing back to normal work schedules, we just got back from our April vacation, and it was time to just reset and take in all the news. Report cards came out right before our break for term three, and we just got news on how term four work will be accepted. Teachers will be evaluating each student as meeting expectations or not meeting expectations, so there are no actual grades for term four. There will also be no final exams this year. I believe that the expectations per class will vary depending on each teacher's ideas. Overall, it's still just a huge change that the entire school is trying to get used to. I really look forward to Zoom meetings with my classmates and teachers coming up this week. For seniors, I believe that we are still trying to process it all. As an athlete looking forward to spring sports, it was heartbreaking to not have a final season. The coaches have been reaching out to check up on all of us and want to have a way to commemorate the seniors in a special way, once it's safe to do so. We are all just trying to stay as positive as we can in this situation. I know students are anxious and nervous as to what the future holds as a class, but I'm hopeful that it will be special in the end.
I think we all share your sentiments. You've got to be one of the hardest-hit groups of people, and between high school and college graduates and all those special occasions. I have a niece and a nephew that he was supposed to graduate from college, and she was supposed to get married in May. Both things have been pushed off, just in one family, so. Any questions from the members of the committee?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Doug.
Girls, how did the conversations go with the administration around looking at options? Were you pleased about that, or what did you think?
The main thing that I took from today, which I completely understand, is that our administration is still very uncertain about what is to come. So I think that was kind of the answer to all of the suggestions that during the Zoom, students were able to chat in questions with what they had. So the answers to said questions that students had, or suggestions students had, were kind of, we don't really know what's going on, looking forward, which I completely get because that is the truth. No one really knows what's gonna happen. So I feel like that kind of was what the response was to students.
The same thing. I agree with Lilly, too. I think there was a meeting on Friday coming up that they're gonna discuss a lot of these ideas. So I think a lot of the information was gonna be based off this meeting, but not completely. So she already said it, but a lot of the things are just up in the air. So we all, I think we're hopeful for more answers, but it's tough right now because everything's changing week by week. So it's understandable completely. I think we're just trying to stay hopeful at this point.
Yeah, I think that there are a lot of questions that they're working to find answers for, right? And so I think it's the, I think you touched on this when your comments, Lilly, just about the uncertainty, right? And so, you know, this is something that we haven't done, so there's not a script for it. So there's a lot of questions that I think people are trying to figure out the answers to. And I think that that's something that is important, and I think we're gonna need to do it together. We're gonna need student help, we're gonna need parent help. And it's not gonna be, it's gonna be different, you know? There are gonna be, the fact that schools are closed, and for the remainder of the year, and you talked about being sad, and I can tell you, there's a lot of administrators and a lot of teachers that are as sad and upset as you guys are in not being able to reconnect with you, as you guys are sad and not being able to connect with friends and them as well. But we're working on it, so.
I think that's just probably the most important thing to us, and it makes me feel really good that you're saying that you're working on it, because I think that's all we can ask for at this point, is that every option is explored. So I think that's helpful.
Yep.
Tom, did you have something to say?
Thanks. The biggest thing that I wanted to say, first of all, was to, again, congratulate and thank these two fine representatives. Through your time as being student representatives, you've had to report all sorts of things, mostly interesting, sometimes fun, you know, sometimes MCAS stuff and great class events. But certainly, your report tonight was very mature, was very thought out, was very well-spoken, well-read. I want to congratulate you for that, regardless that if the class of 2020 is getting, you know, ripped off for the last half of its senior year, you are still fine representatives, providing, really showing the pride of Wakefield. And I wanted to thank you for that. I mean, just the way that you read the statements, you prepared them, you thought them through. It certainly shows a lot of class, a lot of style, and some really quality leadership. I also want to say the same thanks and congratulations to the senior class officers. That, you know, I happen to be fortunate to have a, you know, to have my daughter's class of 2020, and I did see the class, the survey that went out, and did talk to her about it. So I saw some of the questions, very, again, very well-thought-out questions, very organized, very well put together, and I think the response that you got from your class, even having 85, you know, students on your Zoom call today was impressive. You guys have a lot to look forward to in the rest of life, and you guys, this will be part of a real strong memory, even though with what Mr. Callen said, we will certainly do absolutely everything in our power to make sure that you have the best senior class events that you possibly can. We all don't know what's going on in the world, we never mind our little corner of it, but when things become, you know, within Wakefield's control, again, we will react. So please keep up communicating class, keep up, you know, with each other, and provide ideas, provide them back to Mrs. McLeod and the high school administration, provide them directly to the superintendent or directly to the school committee. You have a voice, and your words tonight were well-spoken and certainly well-heard. So thank you, ladies. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Susie?
Yeah, girls, I would love, I want to thank you for kind of sharing your feelings about today's meeting. I did want to ask, you mentioned prom and graduation. Are there other senior activities that you guys feel are critical to have happen, and do you feel like those are well-known? And I personally don't know exactly what they would be. I know senior night is obviously something that goes along kind of after prom. I'm assuming there's some kind of award ceremony. Are there other things that you both feel are high priorities along with graduation and prom?
I think while there's probably a lot of different events that we're gonna want to happen, prom and graduation are top on our radar, but definitely what you just mentioned, the award ceremony is really important. And I know I was talking with my parents today, and we, I completely forgot about when the seniors go back to their elementary schools. So I don't know how that could ever happen, but that is definitely something that is unfortunate that we're going to miss. So I think probably prom and graduation are on top of my and my classmates' priority list, but definitely the award ceremonies, senior night, and going back to our elementary schools are also pretty important and will be missed if not had.
I agree with those, too. I also know that they mentioned during our meeting that we have a senior week usually during school. So I think they were trying to do that, I think online, they mentioned in some not-so-different ways they were thinking of ideas to have this special week that we usually have, too. But that's honestly mostly the things that I can think about.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure that the committee had a kind of a point of view on what were the highest priorities that we can, you know, awards ceremony feels like maybe that's something you could do virtually and do online, and would that, you know, is that a priority? It sounds like it is. The elementary school visits, I have heard that one as well, that that is really meaningful for kids, and it would be nice to figure out how to make that happen, too. Perfect. Thank you for being here and being spokespeople. And as Tom said, you guys were, really did a nice job and are super well-spoken and poised. It's not easy to do what we're doing on these calls, and you guys did a great job. Thanks. And I know it's an emotional topic, too, so you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Amy?
Hi, girls. I just also want to echo what Tom and Susie shared with you. You know, we're really proud of you guys, and, you know, you really are representing the senior class so well, and, you know, we're proud. We are gonna try and do everything we can to help you guys. And again, like you said, everything is so up in the air, and there are so many things that we, so many unknowns. So just know, I just hope it's comforting for you to know that, you know, we're supporting you guys, and we're gonna try and do whatever we can to help you. And thank you so much for, you know, speaking up for your class. You always do a great job, so I appreciate you guys very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the girls? Doug?
So I just wanted to make sure, girls, that you received my email. I guess you're getting a little bit of a following from elementary students that don't watch School Committee. And we've gotten some notes from parents that have said, "It's not that we don't like listening to the adults, but the young ladies at School Committee are stars." And so between the parents and especially the elementary students that are so excited to see you, because I think they've seen you at their games and around town, so they feel like they know someone that's on TV. So they're feeling quite good about seeing you, and I think that you have increased our viewership.
For 20 now.
Right?
Okay, well, thank you, girls. And, you know, anything comes up, you know how to reach us. You have all our addresses, and don't be afraid to reach out with, you know, good news or questions or things like this to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we'll go to our consent agenda. We have approved the minutes of April 10 and the 14th.
Yes. Can I just say, before I read those, I keep kind of going in and out. So I missed the Pledge of Allegiance, and I just missed what Doug had said. So if I'm not following along the way I should be, just, I don't know if I'm having an issue with my computer.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Move that the School Committee approved the minutes of the April 10, 2020 Special School Committee meeting, and the minutes of the April 14, 2020 Regular School Committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the April 16, 2020 School Committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded by Tom Flynn. All votes on a virtual call need to be roll call.
Mr. Mackham?
Yes.
Ms. Porter here?
Yes.
Ms. Veer?
Yes.
Ms. Chris Stowe?
Yes.
Mr. Callender?
Yes.
Ms. Grueda?
Yes.
And Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Okay, so a unanimous vote. Thank you. Chairman's comments. You know, I think we're all in limbo, I think, learning what the Department of Education's gonna come down with for further guidance for the rest of the year. I know Doug is in constant contact with them on some pretty massive Zoom calls. The number of participants must be pretty high. And we're also looking, you know, forward to just, you know, how we're gonna come out of this, and how we're gonna be able to start to regain our lives over the next few weeks, hopefully. The, as we recalled in our last meeting, you know, today was supposed to be the town election. We weren't supposed to have a meeting today. And so that has been postponed until the end of June. Town meeting will be the first week of June. It's important that we have town meeting, because without town meeting approval, we'll have no budgets for next year, starting July 1. And then we would be forced to go to a 1/12 budget every month, which is really hard to work with. As far as FY21 update, Doug will have more to say in his comments, I'm sure, but, you know, the town is predicting a pretty large shortfall in revenue due to the lack of income from things like restaurant taxes and hotel taxes and the like, and building permits and all that's happening. So we're anticipating a rather large shortfall for next year. And so we are gonna have to start planning as to how we will be able to absorb that kind of an impact and what we can do to get there. My hope is that we can take and, you know, save as much as we can now, so that we can lessen the blow for next year's budget. Beyond that, I think I'm gonna move on to Doug's comments. Doug?
Yep, I'm just adjusting my technology. It just took a minute.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Chris. I appreciate it. So just kind of comments and updates to start off. We are working very closely, Christine Befagna, myself, and the administrative team, we're working pretty closely to close out the FY20 budget. We're looking very closely at revolving accounts. We're looking closely where parents have paid fees and tuitions, for example, for Doyle or for spring sports, and kind of we're working on options for parents as we move forward. And we're gonna be looking at the possibility of providing refunds or giving credits, or maybe even a third option, if a parent wanted to make a donation to help a family or another student in need, they might be able to do that as well. That's something that we are working on. I want to thank Amy McLeod and her administrative team for meeting with the seniors and the class officers this week, and also for setting up the group meeting on Friday morning. You know, there's a lot of emotion about the losses and/or the loss over loss over loss that our students are experiencing, and the loss of milestone events. And I think that affects all of us, but I'm encouraged to work with Amy and her team. And I think that we're gonna be creating some options that I think are gonna work well under the circumstances. You know, I think it is a time that is, again, I know it's been said and said and said, but it is an unprecedented time, and we've never had anything happen like this before for many, many, many years. And so we're working at it, you know, which kind of speaks to, I think, our work. And I'll talk, Cara, myself, and Lynn O'Neill are gonna talk a little bit more about kind of what Learn Anywhere is looking like, and I'll have more comments there. You know, really, we're just trying to keep focused on what's in front of us. We're looking at problem solving as it comes. You know, we're looking at grading, the budget, and closing out the school year. We're looking at milestone events. And we're also starting to look at, and I know Chris Callen alluded to this in the beginning, we're starting to think about what our return to school could look like. What will it look like in the summer in regard to extended-year services? If we're able to go back in the summer, what will it look like in the fall, if we're able to go back in the fall? We, as an executive team, are collaborating, creating a few different plans that will kind of, that really at the heart of all of our planning is kind of this focus on just trying to meet students where they're at, right? We know that we are ending school, or students will be out of school for 61 days. So essentially, they'll miss student-teacher contact time for 61 days. Remote learning is a plus, but it does not substitute for in-school classroom work. And so we know, because students are not ending where they normally do, that we in the fall are going to need to start at a different place, because students are ending or haven't been in school for a number of days. We know that. We're actively planning for that. And one of the things that we're gonna be working on is, and Cara Morrow is gonna be heading up this work in the spring and in the summer, is, you know, how do we make adjustments? And you'll talk a little bit more about that when we talk about Learn Anywhere. So just another update, we've worked collaboratively with the Wakefield Education Association, the teachers' union, and we've created what we call a Memoranda of Understanding. We call it an MOU, which is really just a plan for how we will work, how teachers will work, and how administrators will work during this school closure. So it's pretty standard. It's not radical stuff. It's a guide, and it's a plan, and it can be adjusted as student needs change, as family needs change, as community needs change. And I think that that's probably one of the things that I'm proudest about in regard to creating this document collaboratively with the WEA leaders, right? And so I shared that MOU with the School Committee. This is kind of an agreement between the School Committee and the teachers. And, you know, we just, in regard to our leadership, you know, we feel like we facilitated the development of a good MOU or a plan moving forward from now until the end of the year. We know that we're gonna need to make amendments or adjustments to it, and as we do, we will update the committee. I don't know if anyone has questions about it. If so, I'll be happy to answer them. Tom?
I just have a quick question, Doug. Is it the MOU, do they need a body vote to pass it, or is it just something the E-Board can do on their own?
So it's going to be ratified by the whole teacher group, and so that's happening. And so it also needs to be approved by School Committee. It's pretty standard fare. It's happening across the state in all districts.
Perfect. Doug, does this have any financial impact, or is this really just a working conditions type of thing?
There's no financial impact. It's a working conditions, it's a working conditions guide, is what it is.
And do we have to follow the same protocol we do with the contract, where they ratify first, and then we sign it, or?
It's kind of, it's happening in parallel. They were gonna do it today, but they're gonna do it tomorrow morning. So if the committee felt like they've seen the document and they can vote on it, I would say, that's terrific. You can sign off, and then they can sign off, or vice versa. You know, it's not the last time that you're gonna see the document, because as we amended going into the spring, and I would say even into the summer and maybe even the fall, you know, you're gonna see it a couple more times. Does that answer your question, Chris?
Yes, yeah. What about anybody else on the plane? Tom?
Thanks, Chris. So I guess at the risk of giving the seven committee reporters part of this, you know, just adding that, you know, we've all had the opportunity to read the document over the last couple of days since the superintendent sent it out. As he said, it is pretty standard fare with what the MTA is supporting, as well as, I think, some many superintendents around the state. It's fairly common language. It's certainly good language. I would echo what the superintendent said in thanking, you know, the teacher leadership for being, you know, continuing to be not only available, but to be most interested and engaged in making sure that teaching and learning continues as best we all can. So with the WEA moving to, you know, have their leader, have their entire membership, excuse me, ratify this tomorrow, I would recommend that we have seen this document. It is well-done. It's certainly obviously recommended by the superintendent, and I would recommend that we vote on it tonight.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
At the risk of taking a spot, I don't think there's a motion language. I will happily make a motion to approve the MOU as presented by the superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ding. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, Judy, roll call.
Mr. Mackham?
Yes.
Ms. Veer?
Yes.
Ms. Veer?
Yes.
Chris Stowe?
Yes.
Mr. Callender?
Yes.
Ms. Grueda?
Yes.
And Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Okay, so that unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Just a few more comments, I think, before I jump to the COVID-19 update and the school closure update. I just have one more comment to make in regard to the FY 20 and 21 budget. I did mention that we're working on plans and closing out FY 20. In regard to FY 21, the forecast at the state level is, is pretty grim. You know, they're anticipating a, between a $5 and $6 billion shortfall at the state level. I think our finance and forecasting group here in Wakefield is a pretty aggressive group. And, and I think that they have kept us as a municipality really in, in safe harbor, in, in good standing. And so they are actively working with, with all departments and all department heads looking at where cuts can be made. I've had a few Zoom meetings with Steve Mayo and we've talked about, we've talked about this. And so we know that, that we on the school side are going to need to make adjustments for FY 21. And we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday morning for the finance subcommittee to really start this collaborative work to figure out what cuts we will be able to make. And so more information to follow there. And so in regard to the COVID-19 updates and the school closure, you know, I feel like I can't say this enough. You know, safety and containing this virus and keeping people safe is our first priority. You know, with the warm weather and with, you know, the predictions coming in far less than I think anticipated, I think people are feeling really safe. And, you know, I was, did I lose, did I lose you, Chris?
No, Cara shared a screen.
Oh, sorry.
And so, and so one of the things that we, that we know is that, you know, in, in regard to containing this virus. And, and my point was just to say that, you know, people have, in feeling safe, have been more active in getting out. And we're seeing kind of less and less social distancing. We're seeing less, kind of less people wearing masks. I was in Wakefield today, you know, and, and it was, it was pretty busy. And so again, you know, the governor spoke today about six or seven hours ago. And he extended the nonessential closure that was supposed to end on May 4th. He extended that closure to May 18th. So, you know, I think we as school leaders want to encourage people to really be vigilant and continue their efforts around social distancing, wearing masks and really staying safe. We are actively working with Ruth Clay from the Board of Health. She's been a great resource for us, as has Tom Walsh, our emergency management director for the town. And so our school nurses are also working with Ruth Clay in contract, excuse me, contact racing. And Tom Walsh has been fantastic in really helping us get masks and gloves for essential personnel, for food service people and for people that still need to, to be in the office. So thank you, Tom, for that. School buildings will continue to be closed. Please know, and I feel like we, we need to tell parents and students this. We are actively working on plans. And as soon as, as kind of the restrictions ease a little bit in, in regard to the safety piece that allow us to open up buildings, we will be making plans to get students in, to get all of their belongings, to clean out their lockers, et cetera. So that's, that's really it for the update on the school closure in COVID-19. And so we have kind of an update on Learn Anywhere. And I'd like to invite Cara Morrow and Lynn O'Neal to just join me for this part of our presentation. Cara, do you want to start or do you want me to start?
You can go ahead and jump in on that slide, Doug. I'll jump in a couple more if you like. If we, can, can everyone see the presentation? Okay?
Yes.
All right, great.
So, you know, one of the things that, you know, we, we are learning a lot as leaders and we are trying to adapt and meet the needs of a lot of people and a lot of families, right? When we first got news of the school closure, you know, we initiated our closure on, on Friday, March 13th. And, and that day, that is the first day that we were closed. It was also a day that we started Learn Anywhere. So we are, we're starting our sixth week of Learn Anywhere. And I've gotten some email from parents that have said, you know, that I am very gracious in, in kind of applauding the work of teachers. And they are correct. I am very proud of the work the teachers are doing. But please don't miss my, you know, me being proud of the work that we're doing to not being clear about the fact that, you know, there's still a lot of room for growth. And, and we're open to kind of working with families and students to figure out how best to meet the needs of families and students to, to improve learning. So that's something that we're working on every day. But when we started, a top priority for us was really trying to create safe spaces for kids. And to try to, you know, the guiding questions that we used as an administrative group, you know, are, 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 are students physically and emotionally safe? How are they doing? Do we have students displaced from their homes due to the crisis? This is when we started, these are the guiding questions. And students and families really have what they need. You know, what are their fundamental needs being met during this closure, right? This was in the first two weeks. What does food look like, food insecurity? What does technology look like? Do they have the resources that they need? So that was our first few weeks. We developed, in week two, we developed a meal plan. And right now we're feeding an average of about 80-plus students. I think the work of Danielle Collins, our food service director, Lisa Brown, and all of our food service staff who come in on a rotating schedule to prepare meals for families have been terrific. We can't thank them enough. And so we actively have a plan and there's a form to sign up if you need support. We also make extras if you can't get to the form and you need to come by. On Wednesday, midday from 10 to noon, we make meals and you can pick them up at the loading dock at the high school. We're also collaborating with the food pantry. We've increased our, when we send out our updates, we always try to put a link on there and try to provide some information about what parents and students might be able to do to help the community. And one of our first groups that we always are trying to support is the food pantry. Because we know if families need meals and we are supporting them for some portion of the week, the other portion of that time, they're accessing the Wakefield Food Pantry. We also collaborated with the Chamber of Commerce in Linfield and Wakefield and, and the Savings Bank. And we've created a fund, or they have created a fund to support us. And they've created what we call cards for the community. And these are, these are gift cards. They're, they're small and small amounts. But they, you can kind of get their gift cards for Shaw's and for local restaurants that you might be able to get takeout or some groceries in the event, in the event that you can't get what you need from the meal plan at, in Wakefield or from the food pantry. So technology has also been kind of a fundamental part of us making sure that kids have what they need and families have what they need. We have provided, a, a number of students and families have reached out to their principals. And they've said, you know, we really need help. We have, we need a machine. We don't have one or it broke. Or, you know, I'm changing jobs, so I had to give my machine back. Is there any way that you have a laptop or a Chromebook for us? And we have provided over 60 Chromebooks to WPS students and families that are in need. And really the kind of the root that we've found out about that are the relationships that students have at the building level. And they have let us know and we've set it up so that these devices can be picked up on Monday morning at central office, you know? We've also prioritized funds in the local budget and, and grants, in our grants to account for an increased need in technology support. So we're purchasing more devices now for students as well. The challenge is everything is backordered. So we've ordered a bunch of Chromebooks and a bunch of laptops. And we are kind of in the queue like everyone else in the country that are trying to get machines to, to support everyone during this time. But there'll be more information to follow there.
Great. So I can jump in on this next slide. So this really after, once we, as Doug had mentioned, made sure that all of our students and families had their basic needs met, that they, you know, and like I said, this is, that, that work is still ongoing where we're checking in with our students. It's not an initial check-in and then we don't look back. We're really needing to stay on top of that and keep, keep in touch with our students as best we can. But then we did need to look at our Learn Anywhere structure. As, as we know, we were very fortunate to have the platform and to have a couple of years under our belt of trying out remote learning. But there were still things that we needed to, to work out and consider, especially given the length of time. I think we've all been following this closely. And as Doug said earlier, just trying to stay a couple of steps in front of it. But, you know, with that, I think, I think all of us knew that there was a strong likelihood for further time out of school. So one of the things, one of the initial communication, one of the initial pieces of change that we, we sent out to people was really looking at how we were structuring our Learn Anywhere, thinking about a Monday through Friday schedule. Typically, Learn Anywhere in the past had more so been, you know, a day here, maybe tops two days in a row. So now we were looking at it, at a week at a time for how we were going to support our students. At the secondary level, we did feel that teachers could, you know, at a reasonable pace move forward with some new content as they felt it was appropriate. At the elementary level, we were originally sticking with more review and enrichment of previously learned, previously learned concepts. So knowing that we couldn't go on with that type of structure forever, we, we knew that there would have to be increased opportunities for teachers to plan. And we were also thinking about, we were also thinking about our, the differences in our students and our family needs. We had many students, we have, we have, basically it's a wide mix in terms of some families saying this is too much, too much work, please scale it back. Or some families saying this isn't enough, we need more. You know, our students are not working up to a half day. So we felt like the opportunity to, the schedule shift of putting new learning opportunities out Monday through Thursday with Fridays for more of an option to differentiate, whether that be a catch-up day for students who needed it or a chance for increased enrichment for students who, and families who wanted that. And also an opportunity for our teachers to have the availability to really work within their PLCs with their curriculum coordinators to be planning new learning, new remote learning for the next couple of weeks as well. So that was a big shift that we made in the beginning. Oops, sorry, skipped ahead too, too quickly. So again, you know, in, in that really supported our initial communication too around teacher teaming and collaboration as well. Doug mentioned early on in his comments about the work that has been done with the WEA, just trying to again establish knowing that we were out for this length of time, that we would be out longer. What are, what are the working conditions look like? What, what makes sense for people? How can we manage all of this? How do we, we meet our students where they're at and give them, you know, the best possible experience in a remote learning environment? So I think that was a really great collaboration with the WEA. I know we were all involved in that and, you know, I'm, I'm feeling very fortunate that we got, we came to agreement on that. We've also continued, you know, we, as Doug mentioned also, we've been communicating with people by email, in person, getting feedback here and there. But we did issue more formal surveys at each of the levels. The elementary level got a survey out right before the vacation. I know Galvin has issued a couple of check-in surveys. And the high school also had put out a survey as well to students. And so that was really helpful feedback that was organized. And well, I believe Ms. McLeod already sent that out to the students to review or to the staff at least. So we'll, we'll continue to look at that survey data and organize it and analyze it as a group. And then we do have our Learn Anywhere Committee getting back together at the end of this week to hear additional feedback and get an update from the school side of things. Doug, did you raise your hand to say something or are you good?
I have to unmute myself.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I thought you raised your, did you raise your hand to jump in?
Okay. So I just want to, I just want to stress that we are hearing through our surveys and through feedback from students and parents, some of whom are school committee members, right? So we have like inside people here working, working with us and give us feedback. And we hear pretty regularly around, you know, what is most critical in the process of their children's learning. And I think what we have heard from kindergarten up through grade 12 that parents and students like really thrive on the face-to-face interaction. And the, the ways that teachers have been innovative. Some teachers have recorded lessons. And then in one meeting and another meeting, they're checked in with kids or they're, they're doing that a couple of times a week. And, and it seems like the more that teachers are doing that, the more positive feedback both teachers are getting and the more positive feedback that we as administrators are getting. And the common theme there is kids are thriving, thriving on the face-to-face interaction and the relational side of the work. Am I missing anything there, Cara?
No, I think absolutely. And I think, I think those are the messages that we're trying to, to put out as best we can. We're, we're kind of working in, in different structures. Doug and I don't have as much access daily to, you know, the teaching staff. We're more so, you know, we'll, we'll check in here and there, but it's not like it was when school was in session where we can walk the hallways, pop into a classroom. So we're really relying on our messaging, you know, our messaging has to be super clear in terms of our messaging to principals, curriculum coordinators, other admin staff who are working more directly and just troubleshooting day-to-day issues with the teachers. And just trying to make sure that that message is, is most clear, that really the outreach piece is just so critical during this time.
I think Tom Flynn has a question for us.
Okay.
Cara, just a quick question. I know that you said you sent surveys out to parents and students. Have we sent the survey out to the teachers to have any of their input or their ideas or how they're feeling? How they are getting through all of this themselves or?
We have not sent out a formal survey to teachers yet. That has been more so, you know, I know principals are doing a great job of checking in with their teachers by department or by grade level and trying to check in with them that way. We have not sent out a formal survey, but that, that's a great idea and something that we could certainly look to do.
We also have a real-time feedback loop in that we are talking with the WEA leaders four or five times a week. So usually when anything is, you know, that if there's anything pressing that we need to talk about, I think they get right back to us and let us know. But they, but the feedback, but I don't miss you, I'm not missing your point and I think it's really important. It's about communication and feedback, right? And so I appreciate that. Cara, did you talk about teaming and collaboration or is that on the next slide?
Well, so I did touch about, upon that a little bit with the schedule shift. How, you know, our, our initial collaboration really stressed the importance of this at this time. And I'll, I'll get into more around consistency and alignment. But, but that was part of our early communication that we had sent out that we really need our teacher teams working closely together, not only to be a support to one another, to share resources, to fall back on one another should, should someone need time off or, or, you know, for any other reason. So, so we've really been stressing that. And I think what we're hearing is that that is increasing by the week. And, and people are working together really well throughout this time. Anything else you wanted me to mention on that or any other questions on this slide before I go on? Okay.
Learn Anywhere Committee?
Yep. So I did, yep, we're going to be meeting, reconvening this Thursday. So we have our Learn Anywhere Committee getting back together through video conferences Thursday.
For, for parents that might be watching that either don't recall or don't know, can you share a little bit about what the Learn Anywhere Committee is?
Sure. So we established this committee at the beginning of last year. And it was more so, it was a group, mixed group. Matt Carter, who's now principal of the Woodville School, and I facilitated the group. And it was a mix of administrators, teachers, parents. And it, it was a mix of administrators, teachers, parents, um, representing each of the levels. And what we did was we got together, um, more frequently in the beginning of last year. Um, I know we presented to school committee, I believe it was like December of last year. Um, and, and what we did was we, we gathered feedback, we got perspective, we put out surveys and, um, the intention was to make, you know, can, just continue to grow Learn Anywhere. And we identified, um, areas where the program was working really well and areas where we needed to improve. And, and that was work that we were working towards before we got news that, um, alternative education programs would, would not be allowed moving forward by DESI. Um, but I think that that work of the committee has served us really well in this time because it, it really, um, it gave us some focus areas that I think we're still relying on, you know, as we continue to make Learn Anywhere better through the closure. So I just shifted ahead the slide. I'm gonna pull in Lynn here to speak about Learn Anywhere adjustments related to special education.
All right. Well, special education, um, certainly is, um, a hot topic with the school closure. Um, we have worked really, really closely with all of our teaching staff, all of our related service providers, all of our paraprofessionals, um, and even our contracted service providers to ensure that, um, you know, our hope was that the initial closure, we would be able to open back up. Um, the idea was that all service providers would be in place when that opening, um, came to be. As we extend and extend and extend the closure, we still do have our, our contracted service providers in place. So people, um, like our Roman music therapy are still doing, um, services virtually. Our people who, we have a, a speech assistant that is still doing, um, work for us. We still have our vision services through our contracted service provider. We still have our teacher of the deaf, um, because we wanted people to be ready to go should we be able to come back to school, um, like originally thought. So we've been working really closely with staff. Our highest priority for my special education administrative team was to support staff well so that they could service students well. Um, and as we, as I've been talking with, you know, families and parent-side attorneys, um, it is clear that Wakefield, you know, by jumping in, um, right away, um, we are one of the, one of the few districts in the Commonwealth that has, um, attempted to service our special education students, um, from the very beginning, which is something to be proud about. Um, so there's been lots of communication, both to staff, teachers, parents, related service providers, school psychs, school adjustment counselors, um, all of our contracted service providers and as well as families. Um, there's been, um, communication around, um, frequently asked questions. There's been communication around, um, the guidance from the, the senior associate commissioner, Russell Johnson. Um, the Commonwealth's special education directors have met with, at the state level, um, probably five or six times. And the guidance, you know, they were working through pieces. And the guidance changed from one week to another on a couple of different, um, pieces. But I think it's, it's been cemented now. And, um, the administrative team in Wakefield has pushed out that information to the staff and to families, um, about what you can expect around service delivery and, um, special education in general. So, you know, through multiple staff meetings, we've been working on what services should look like. We've been working on remote learning plans, which outlines, you know, a, a schedule for families around when they can expect services, um, Monday through Thursday, what it will look like. Um, we have been, you know, individualizing student needs. We've been working with families to get students what they need, um, you know, virtually. For some it's easier than others. There are, there are, um, some student populations where it's really difficult to replicate what's in school, you know. I would actually say for all student populations, it's really difficult to replicate the student services that they get from special education while in school. Um, but some populations, um, have an easier time managing and accessing, um, pieces that are provided to them at home than other populations. And that's been really hard. I've heard from several families, um, you know, whose children really count on, on physical therapy sessions, occupational therapy sessions, speech-language pathology sessions. That's really hard to do from home. People are trying really hard, but, um, it's been a challenge. So we have been working through that. Um, through good communication and transparency, we are, you know, hoping that students are getting some of what they need, recognizing that, you know, we're gonna have to keep this conversation going to make sure that when we're back in September, um, students are prepared. So we've talked with paraprofessionals and asked them to take the time, you know, to participate in virtual classes, to, um, provide academic support through phone calls, emails, and virtual check-ins. We've asked them to provide, to participate in some professional development during this time, um, which they were super excited about. Um, they actually just, today was the first day of a session with Jessica Minahan, who is an expert in school anxiety and very hard to get into her workshops. And for, for paraprofessionals, that is something that during a regular school year, they wouldn't be able to participate in because they, they need to be in the classroom. So they participated in the first of two-day sessions, um, today. And they were super excited. We have, we had, um, I think we had about 60 participants today, um, which was exciting. Um, we've talked about delivery of service, um, and how it's going to be virtual and what that means for families, what, what that means for confidentiality, what that means for, um, you know, students being ready to learn in a virtual way. And, um, really being transparent with our communication around, um, consent form. And, you know, families understanding the norms and staff understanding the norms so that we can have successful sessions. Um, we have been, been, um, talking about new direction within the last, um, two weeks around the frequency and duration of services and, you know, how that translates to remote learning. So we've been working with staff and families around those pieces. Um, we also, big news was that the, um, state licensing board that oversees speech-language pathologists relaxed their, um, criteria for providing telepractice. Um, and they gave, they extended the timeframe. All speech-language pathologists were supposed to, um, complete 10 hours of training prior to being able to engage in any type of virtual sessions. Um, that, that requirement has been relaxed. They've given an extended time to do that. And speech-language pathologists are able to do that now prior to finishing the 10 hours, which was exciting news. Um, so all of our speech-language people have, um, started to engage in that practice, which is a better format for families, for students, and for, for our speech pathologists. Um, other related services have been doing virtual check-ins, um, sending activities home, sending resources home. Um, but again, we recognize that this delivery model is not the same as being in school. Um, it only really highlights the great work that our staff is able to do in, um, working with our students daily. We have been communicating with families around frequently asked questions about, um, the expectations. We are, I'm working with CPAC currently, um, to establish a survey for parents, um, just to, to gauge how they feel the services are going for their students, whether or not it's too much, whether or not it's too little. Um, and, you know, the format in which it's, it's taking place and how it's working for them. So I think I'm good on this slide, Kara, if we wanna.
Okay. And I, I probably should have said this at the beginning. I don't know if, um, school committee, if you want to ask questions after each slide or if you want us to go through and, and hold for questions at the end.
Why don't you go through and we'll hold for at the end? Cause you might end up answering along the way.
Okay, all right, sounds good. All right, so this moves us into Learn Anywhere adjustments related to curriculum and instruction. So as I had mentioned, uh, the original, uh, plan for Learn Anywhere was for it to be a day, two days at a time. Um, and, and a lot of the guidance that we were giving to teachers in terms of posting assignments was, uh, connected to what's happening in that moment, um, in terms of the scope and sequence of the curriculum. And, um, and the teachers were great about doing that. They were connecting assignments to what had just previously been taught before, um, the snow day or school had been out. But with us looking at, you know, at, at least three weeks at a time or longer, which now we know is longer, we really needed to think about our curriculum and make some agreements around what would be focus areas during the closure. So what, uh, we started, uh, I think we've, we've been talking with every level since the start of the closure, um, but I'll just go in order here in terms of, um, the elementary level. So we did, we did start, um, talking with all of the principals around expectations, roles, and responsibilities. And that's, I think, a lot of that is reflected in, in the MOU. Um, but we did, we did wanna continue to highlight consistent planning elements and, um, really promote as many live interactions as possible with our students, whether it's through, um, phone calls, uh, pre-recorded lessons, live video conference, small group video conference, large group. Um, just to, to, as, as Doug mentioned, it just really gives our students the lift that they need. And we feel it's, it's the, the most beneficial way, uh, or most effective way to really engage students in this platform. So I think we all, um, early on came to agreement that, that we really wanted to work with, um, our teachers and staff around how we could do that, um, to the best of our ability. So then, um, then we were also finding, particularly at the elementary level as we started, that the guidance we were giving was, was to focus on, on previously taught standards and skills and really look at it as an enrichment. And, you know, after I think first couple of weeks, you know, that, that's good. But then it really starts to get to a point where I think the teachers, students, families felt like, you know, at what point do we move forward? And we, um, we tried to, and like I said, we're trying to just stay a couple of steps in front of this and, and we were proactively planning for a longer closure. I would say probably, you know, up to three weeks ago, where, um, Doug and I were meeting with principals, uh, coordinators, literacy coaches, and saying, what are our, what are our priorities going to be during this closure? Because we have four elementary schools and a lot of the work that we were doing before the closure was focused on aligning as best we can and, and having, um, you know, some consistency both horizontally at the elementary level as well as vertically up through secondary. So we decided that the route to go would be to create priority documents, similar to the curriculum maps that I've talked with you, uh, talked about with you in earlier meetings. Um, it's really just narrowing down what are the most, um, important skills and standards that we want to target our lessons around during this closure. And it's funny because I shared this, uh, slideshow with you, um, I think probably last Friday. And then Friday night, uh, the, it, the guidance from DESI was issued. And, you know, I think it all made us feel really good that the path we started on was the right one. Because their guidance, um, again, it, it broke things down in charts even more so. But it was really focused on identifying essential skills and standards at every grade level. And they put out, um, their guidance that really, I thought, I think mirrors what, what we've already started on. Um, so it, it felt good to all of us. Um, I met again with elementary principals and coaches and coordinators today. And I think we all really felt like, okay, we're on the right path. Um, we've already had our, uh, conversations with every grade level of teachers around, you know, why we need to do this, why this is important. So, um, you know, we felt pretty good about that. And I did link the docs, um, that we put together for reading, writing, and math for every grade level. Science and social studies, uh, DESI did put out essential standards in those subject areas as well. Not that we're minimizing those subject areas in, in anywhere, in any way, but we have not created priority documents, um, for those yet for Wakefield. Um, we've, we've been, uh, looking at more enrichment-based, um, activities that, um, that we certainly could tie to essential standards. And then the other, um, the other, the second bullet is around the concept of brainstorming meetings. So again, at the elementary level, collaboration looks a little different because we do have four, you know, we have the four elementary schools. And, um, so what we have put together and we're hoping to launch these next week is we're going to facilitate brainstorming meetings. Um, and, and the purpose of these meetings is to pull grade-level teachers together. Um, so for example, um, all of the first-grade teachers across the district. We are putting out optional brainstorming meeting times, um, each week at a consistent time. We'll be sending out invitations for those. They'll happen on either a Tuesday or Wednesday. And the purpose of the meeting will be to look at the target, uh, standards for that week and then, um, come up with ideas and basically utilize the expertise that we have across the district to share ideas and resources around how, um, our teachers might teach those particular skills to our students. So, um, we think that those will be great opportunities. They'll be facilitated by our principals, our literacy coaches, and our STEM curriculum coordinator. And, um, I think it will be a nice opportunity, um, for, for our teachers to collaborate remotely. And at the secondary level, um, we, you know, as you know, we have our, our curriculum coordinators, uh, five through 12 in every subject area. Um, I think the work that we've done at that level since the beginning is really working with our principals, um, I, really clarifying roles and responsibilities. We're taking kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach where, you know, we, we worked with our curriculum liaisons at Galvin, our department coordinators at the high school and really stressed, um, the need to collaborate and, and to work together to support, um, this curriculum work and identify priority standards across all, um, subject areas and courses. So, um, coordinators are, are attending PLCs. They're supporting this work with the guidance that was put out by DESI on Friday night. They've already started, um, putting together documents for every, um, subject area and course to, to be able to have reference points for teachers to look at as they're, as they're planning their assignments each week. And, um, we also agreed, another adjustment that we agreed upon was the need to have, um, to support our families with really like a week at a glance, where we have, um, lessons mapped out for the week so that families and students can prioritize their time. They, um, they know what's to come. They know if there's going to be a live meeting, when it is, and can, and, you know, organize within their family accordingly. So that was, that was important for us as well. So, um, most of, most of this planning, um, you know, the rollout, you, you can't communicate enough particularly with this type of structure. So, uh, you know, there's been planning meeting after planning meeting, creating consistent communication, meeting with teacher groups, meeting with instructional leadership teams. Um, all of that is just super important so that people remain on the same page. But I have to say, most of the planning, um, people have been, um, for all the planning people have been great, it's been well-received. And, um, I think there seems to be pretty broad agreement that we're moving in the right direction with this. And, um, Lynn, I'll kick it over to you for the Doyle and Post adjustments.
All right, so the bookends, Doyle and Post Academy. Um, they are a little bit different than, um, all of our levels in between. Um, so Doyle, um, as you can imagine, all of the, the preschool teachers were, you know, gung-ho right from the start. They were, um, this is sort of the, working at the creative side is right within their wheelhouse. Um, and they started, and they started sending activities and resources and lessons and recorded, um, you know, story time and many, many, many things to, um, their families. As well as all their related service providers were sending many things to our families because lots of our kids there have seen multiple providers. And it was a bit overwhelming for parents. So, um, Shannon Blacker, the principal, and who also functions as the special education coordinator there, pulled her staff together and really did a concrete sort of schedule, um, about who's doing what when and who has access to it. Um, and she encouraged, um, you know, to do some groups so that some co-treatment groups, so that parents are not becoming overwhelmed. Um, she encouraged paraprofessionals to get into the loop. They use the platform of Dojo, um, as well as some other creative things. And so she's really mapped out a nice schedule that seems very, much more manageable for, um, parents. Um, she also has reached out to really try to create some special event each week so that, um, and the whole school would log on. So, um, she would have been working with, in collaboration with an art enrichment, um, the Kid Casso, to do, uh, an event, you know, for a couple of different, um, weeks within, from here until June. Um, we've also, you know, our contracted service provider, the Roman Music Therapy, that, you know, that group comes in and does some specialized music, music therapy with a few of our different classrooms. classrooms. Um, but we actually reached out to them to see if they would do a school-wide, um, music event, um, you know, for, uh, four different times from now until the end of the school. So those pre-planned special events seem to work well for Doyle. Um, the calendar works well, having a schedule so that parents know what to expect, when to expect it, um, has been some nice, some nice pieces that Shannon and her staff have put into place. Um, we are, there is, there is still a major question. Um, so I, I, I don't want to make the assumption that people, um, know about early intervention, but early intervention is sort of rolling admission for our, our preschool. So we get referrals. Um, we get information about students that may need our preschool program about six months before they turn three years old. And then about, you know, somewhere in that timeframe, usually, usually a, a few months before they turn three, um, we begin the evaluation process to see if they will be eligible for services, um, for special education and services through our preschool program. Um, well, at this point, we cannot conduct eligibility evaluations because they need to be done face to face. So we are working, the state has given, um, given some guidance, but not definitive guidance about how to, um, make sure that we are not missing any of our kids and making sure that those who need services at the, when they turn three have them and how we do that without our own testing. So we are working out that piece. Um, so it's, it's a continued discussion. Um, we definitely have some complex kids that are, are coming to us and, um, we're gonna, we're working with them to make sure that they have services when they, when they turn three. The other end of the spectrum for Post Academy, um, those are students who are sort of in their early adulthood, anywhere from 18 years old to 22 years old, well, just right before they turned 22. Um, and they have been a little bit harder to engage virtually, um, which is difficult because the teachers have a really great relationship with them and all their contact and communication works with students because we want to really help them, um, learn how to become an independent, um, citizen. And so it's been difficult to, um, get them to get online. So much of their activity, uh, of their academic focus have been, um, activities and packets that have been emailed home, um, sort of communication through the phone, um, things of that nature and not tons of virtual, um, lessons. So the teachers are working on that, um, trying to flip some of the skills so that if they send pieces home, you know, because we do work on adult daily living skills, um, and more of a community-based vocational-based and life-based, um, curriculum. So looking for opportunities that, um, the families can help the students work on at home. So cooking or laundry or, um, you know, some, some light travel training because we're not going far these days, um, but things like that so that they can then check in about how those activities went. So we are working at both ends. It looks a little different than everything in the middle, um, but, you know, um, this stuff is still working hard to try to make it meaningful in a thoughtful way.
Okay. All right. On our next slide, um, we, we just wanted to highlight the enrichment opportunities. You probably saw posted, um, over our April break that we had our curriculum coordinators put together enrichment opportunities across all subject areas, um, for our families that felt like they wanted to keep some, um, structure and learning opportunities going over the break. We're also, um, you know, Friday is a workday for, um, all of our teachers, our staff. It's, um, you know, planning, prep for the following week, um, for our students. It's a time to check up, I, I mean, catch up on their work, but it also might be a time for them to engage in other remote learning opportunities, um, or enrichment. So we're, we're trying to put out enrichment opportunities as best we can on Fridays as well. Um, I know in particular, I saw Galvin put together a really nice, um, choice board on Fridays, um, that, uh, their students are, have access to. And I, I put specialists in here, um, not to say that all of our specialists are, are working in enrichment. Um, you know, I've touched base with Brendan Kent and Tom Banker and, um, all of our art, music teachers, health teachers, they're doing a great job, uh, putting out learning opportunities for all of our, our students. Um, you know, they did say that, you know, at times the, um, participation can be lower. And again, I think that's just to meet the different needs of, of families and whether or not they're just prioritizing a couple of subject areas. So, um, they did say, you know, participation, um, is okay, but, um, that's where, you know, where if we can get support through classroom communication to put out, um, art, music, health, um, assignments, just reminders to families to engage maybe on a Friday if students are caught up, um, that they, they should have additional time to engage in those assignments. Um, I, I just think those teams are doing a really nice job. And we just wanted to outline some next steps. This is again, an update, but our work is, is definitely not done. We have, you know, a lot more. We really, um, you know, as Doug and I talk about this, we have been thinking about it in phases, like the, the beginning of the closure, where we are right now. And then, um, a lot of the work is going to come into play as we are preparing for, um, our return, when, when school can get back in session in a more, um, normal way. Um, so just in terms of our next steps, we have it mapped out. We're going to continue creating learning opportunities for all of our students. Um, we, we do have more to come in terms of a credit and grading system. Amy McLeod had put out, um, information related to height, our high school, um, grading procedures, um, that was mentioned earlier in the meeting. Um, that went out yesterday and Doug and I are continuing to work with the Galvin staff this week, or the Galvin administration this week. And then more to come on elementary as well. Um, we'll continue to plan, um, you know, by creating these priority documents outlining essential standards for every grade level across all subject areas that will, um, that won't even, won't just serve us now. It will also serve us, um, as we're planning the, uh, what we feel will be much needed curriculum shifts for the fall, um, as we're planning for our return. Um, we'll continue to plan safe ways to conduct our essential end of year activities, continue thinking about our social emotional needs of our students and families, um, not only now, but, uh, with the return as well. And then, um, just continue thinking about our extended school year services and how we'll support our students, um, over the school year and into next year, uh, over the summer, I'm sorry, and into next year. So those are just some of the next steps that, that we're thinking about. And I'm happy to open it up to questions at this point, if anyone has any questions.
Okay. Amy had some questions.
I thank you so much. Um, I do apologize, of course, I, I missed a lot of the presentation. Uh, I don't know if my wifi knocked out, but anyway, so I, I apologize if my questions have already been answered. Um, but, um, you know, I, I am concerned about when the students do go back to school and, um, you know, how, how are we going to gauge where, kind of where they're at? You know, like will kindergarteners be ready, um, you know, for the first grade curriculum? Um, you know, will, uh, freshmen be ready for, um, you know, like the, the bio that they have to take? Um, I mean, sorry, the chemistry that they're required now to take as sophomores? I mean, I, I just want to, like, how are we going to gauge the learning and how are we going to gauge if they're socially and emotionally okay to handle it? And, um, really kind of pinpoint the regression, um, because I'm assuming there's going to be, um, you know, not, not because the learning isn't there. I mean, I, I'm, you know, I'm so, um, grateful for this Learn Anywhere program, obviously, but as we all know, it's not the same as in class learning. So, um, you know, I, those are some of my concerns and I, and, and it sounds like you guys obviously are aware of it, but I'm just wondering, you know, how are we really going to make sure that the kids, when they do come back, um, whenever that is, you know, where are they going to be at? And, and, you know, kids, is when they start the new year already kind of fall through the cracks sometimes? Um, and I do feel like, you know, there's a greater chance of that happening for many of our students and, you know, of course, our IEP students, um, you know, for social emotional support, um, but also our non-IEP students as well. I mean, like Doug said, this is a crisis. This is something that is very unprecedented at the time and at this time and it, and it's, you know, again, I'm, I'm, I have faith in the staff and the teachers especially, and it's great to hear that, um, there is brainstorming meetings and collaborations going on. Um, and, and, you know, with that, it would be nice to hear from teachers. I know you said they haven't been surveyed yet, but it would be really great to see since they are kind of on the front lines. Um, you know, with, with, with kind of what they're doing now with Learn Anywhere, I feel like they're the ones who really know, uh, what's happening, what, what we could change, how we could make some accommodations. So, sorry for the long-winded question, but those are some of my thoughts.
Yeah. I, I mean, I can, Doug and Lynn, do you want me to jump in just to, on, you know, in general? And then if you want to add, or do you want to start, Doug?
Go ahead, Kara, I can jump in after you.
Okay. Um, so, you know, I, I, I think you're, you're right on to be thinking like this and I think we, we all are as well. And when we think about regression and, and students being behind, I think the thing that we need to do administratively with our teachers, with our curriculum coordinators is, is adjust how we're, we're viewing where students should be. Um, so, you know, if, if we have a student who left first grade and is going on to second grade, the beginning of second grade has to look different because, you know, as, as Doug mentioned the number earlier, you know, 61 days of instruction, that's, that's a lot of time. And especially, um, you know, I think that there's a lot of learning that happens, but there's, there's a strong chunk of learning that does happen, um, within the spring. And, um, and we, we can't lose sight of that. So I feel like we, we really need to be thinking about how we're going to make curriculum shifts at each grade level. And, you know, the social emotional piece, I mean, that's really when teachers have reached out to, to Doug and I or to, to their principals, they're really, they're all still thinking about that with their students. They're, they're thinking about how abrupt the closure was, you know, we didn't have the time to really say goodbye. Um, they're, they're wondering, you know, what, what's that going to look, look like, um, for a chance to, to, um, be with the students that they left before the closure? So there's a lot that we have to account for when we're planning for the return. Um, in, and I think the guidance that Desi put out indicates to me that, um, curriculum shifts will be made across the board, um, you know, just to, to support our students. And then I think, you know, again, timing's everything, um, but I do feel like we're going to have to baseline students at some point. Um, we're obviously not going to test students the second school gets back, you know, but I think some just, um, I was talking with our curriculum coordinators about this, um, this week, just even thinking about how we can do even informal check-ins, um, just to get a sense of where kids are at so that we can then drive our instruction, it can drive our intervention services, it can support us with, um, you know, additional, um, support where we need it.
Yeah. So I think if I can jump in, Kara, I think I would also add, Amy, um, and for everyone else that, that's watching, I, again, if we're not ending in the same place that we normally would, we can't start where we normally would. And, and we are, you know, please don't miss the fact that everyone in the country, you know, schools are shut down across the country. So everyone in the state and across the country will be, you know, quote unquote, behind, right? And so, you know, we need to kind of understand, um, and, and really not, I don't think we need to frame it as, you know, what does it mean to be quote, behind? Um, because everyone's behind. And so I think, you know, everyone's on pace, you know, and this notion of, um, you know, some kind of researchers and some educational leaders are getting in the space that, you know, we need to have kids come back in the fall or we need to get to them in the summer and we need to test everyone so that it will give us a linear baseline as to what kids know and then we'll build off of that, right? And that will be kind of our, our academic technical baseline. And we know that when trauma, when students experience trauma, when they go through traumatic events, and this is a traumatic event, right? This has kind of threatened, um, the safety, the psychological safety, the behavioral and mental health, uh, and physical health of communities across the state. You know, this is kind of a setback where we're going to need to, um, not test all kids at once and kind of say, okay, this is the new normal, a new baseline that we're just going to build off of. We're going to have to do that, um, you know, regularly. And I think Kara was alluding to this and, and I think what she's, what she's kind of a takeaway for me in, in her comments are, you know, really working hard, and Lynn alluded to this earlier in her comments, is really working hard to meet kids where they are at and then go from there. So it's, it's, you know, yes, um, teachers are going to need to adjust, but they're also going to need to do some personalized work with students to understand what their needs are. And we're going to need to support teachers to do that work as well. And so that's going to mean that teachers are going to need to do some work over the summer in regard to planning their curriculums. That's got, that means that we're going to need to do work, um, with students over the summer if we can get back in session. And if we can't get back in session in the summer, it's going, we have to think about services and supports differently for kids than just during the school day. We might have to think about extending the school day and services for some students for the first semester and for the second semester. But this is a long-term project that we're talking about. So on scale, you know, we're talking about, you know, 12 to 24 months of working to really look at how this is playing out with kids and paying attention to what we're seeing and how we're responding. Um, but, so there's no easy answers to your questions, Amy, but they're questions I think that we're all struggling with, um, and trying to figure out.
Yeah. Um, I, I agree, you know, and I know there's no easy answer and I know there's really, there aren't any, um, answers because we're all kind of swimming in these uncharted waters at this point. But in regards to, it, it does sound like, um, you know, when the kids come back, there's going to be a lot of, um, you know, like you say, um, trying to figure out maybe engaging where the, each kid is. And if that's the case with the student, I mean, with the teachers, I mean, are they going to, like, will you be able to maybe think about implementing, um, some sort of new tools for, or, or timing or something for the teachers to be able to do that?
So we don't know what time we're going to have available, Amy. We don't know what our schedule, uh, what coming back will look like. So we don't know if in the fall, social distancing is going to require us to limit class sizes differently than what's done in the past. We don't know if we're going to have to flex schedules differently than what's done in the past. Uh, but in regard to your question around, uh, teachers, we do need to figure out how to support them and give them time to adjust, just like we need to give, figure out how to do this with students. So there's a, a lot of work that needs to be done. And really at the heart of this is us really trying to think about, you know, moving as fast as we can while not losing anyone, right? And so it's just not about getting to done. It's not about squeezing, you know, if in a normal school year, you taught 10 chapters in physics, you know, it doesn't mean that if we're short 61 days or short some amount of days, that we're just going to do the 10 chapters in fewer days. It doesn't mean that, right? What it, what it means is we're going to need to think about what's essential, what's the priority and how do we support students to do this? And how do we support teachers to do this? Right? And so, um, it's, it's a, it's, you, you ask big questions with no easy answers. And, and, you know, these are things that we're going to be talking about in all of our meetings, uh, moving forward, right?
Yes. And, and I, and I thank you very much. And, and I know you guys are, um, doing the best you can, again, um, with these unfamiliar circumstances. So I do appreciate everything you're doing and, um, thank you for, uh, you know, listening to my questions. I appreciate it. And, and, and I have faith. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Susie had questions?
Yep. Thanks, Chris. Um, so, thank you for the update, Kara and Lynn and Doug. Um, you know, I think some of the feedback that I am getting as well as kind of experiencing myself, um, is around the instruction, the connecting, the feedback. Um, and so it's, it's great to hear that you guys are focused on trying to increase the, um, the amount of connecting. And, and I say connecting, you know, kind of lightly, is it, is it recorded videos? Is it live? You know, for us, the live events, the live gatherings have been really good. Um, and I think it, it creates kind of excitement and connection and engagement. Um, and so it's great to hear that you guys are focused on trying to kind of increase, um, that where it makes sense. You know, I was and am a part of the Learn Anywhere Committee. Um, and I think certainly when we were meeting and talking about kind of what needed to be improved there, when we were dealing with it just as a snow day thing was around consistency and, um, and accountability. And so I think, you know, that consistency is one of the things that my hope is that we will see some improvement over, um, over time, um, around kind of what kids can expect and what parents can expect. can expect, because I think that those connections and with instruction included is desired by kind of many parents and many kids. I guess my one, you know, the one other thing that came up with Learn Anywhere a lot when we were talking about is just kind of the accountability, so that consistency and accountability is really difficult. And I just wondered, as you kind of laid out, what the plan looks like, can you talk a little bit about what accountability looks like and how you're keeping track of kind of what is happening, how you're sharing materials? I think that, you know, I think you guys touched on that, I think there's really an opportunity to share some of those instructional videos and ideas. And so I know the brainstorm meetings is one of those ways that you will do that, but I just wonder if you can talk a little bit about consistency and accountability, because I think that that was, those were two topics that we spent a lot of time talking about in the context of Learn Anywhere, and feed into the feedback I'm hearing.
Sure. Doug, do you want me to take that, or do you want to?
Um, let me jump in. I just want to make a couple points, you know, in regard to, you know, accountability or improvement, right? At the heart of improvement is feedback, right? Teachers need to know what's working well and what isn't, right? I think, I think, you know, the overwhelming majority of our teachers are planning lessons thoughtfully with the, this idea that what they're doing, they're doing it with kind of, with passion, and they think what they're creating is going to work well, right? And we often get feedback that it does work well. When it doesn't work well, or if it misses the mark with a student, or with a family, or families feel like they need something different, or students feel like they need something different, this is where we need feedback, not in a kind of a punitive gotcha, right? And it's not about, you know, someone, you know, checked in with their class five times, and you only did it four, and we want, you know, this type of, you know, everything be equal. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about, you know, what works. When we have been able to, when principals have been able to, give teachers feedback like, hey, heard from Mrs. Smith, she said that, you know, your lessons in social studies at the middle school really go really well when, you know, you do some direct instruction through video, and then follow up later in the week with kind of a class discussion or small group discussion, that really is like fantastic. That is deep feedback that when we get it and we are able to facilitate that or pass it on, it's really made a tremendous difference. And so, you know, I think at the heart of this is this notion of when we know, when teachers know, when we can coach them differently, they act differently, and they improve what they're doing. That's kind of our working theory. And I will let Cara jump in here, because she's done a ton of work, and Lynn has done a ton of work, both with the NS and the ISPs, and Cara's done a ton of work around this with the curriculum coordinator, so.
Well, I mean, I think I'll just add, it has been, you know, this structure obviously is more challenging than ever in terms of understanding what's happening for learning opportunities for our students. Like I said, you know, we can't just pop into a classroom, or, you know, check in on a PLC, or, you know, join a planning meeting. So we're really, we really stress in our early communication the need to collaborate and share, and in part of that sharing that we had requested, I think this was probably in, I've kind of lost track of the weeks, maybe the second or third week of the closure, that we really, we asked teachers, you know, not in a, like Doug said, a gotcha way, but we need to know what everyone's doing, so we can provide the appropriate support to help people move forward. So we did put out a request that, you know, the teachers are sharing their Google classrooms with either, you know, a trusted administrator that they have a great relationship with, a department coordinator, a literacy coach, so that they have backup support in terms of their planning, if they have a question about something. It allows our instructional leaders just to get a good sense of what's happening across grade levels and subject areas. And again, we've talked about, we're continuing to be thinking about developing resource folders. I think those elementary brainstorming meetings will be great when we kick those off next week. We've already started, you know, a lot of the desire to learn more has come directly from the teachers, from what I've heard, or heard either directly, or that principals or instructional leaders have shared with us, particularly around the desire to learn more tech. So we are tapping into our Learn Anywhere liaisons, as well as our library media specialists. Julia Sporano is our elementary Learn Anywhere liaison and library and media specialist at Woodville, and she joined us at the elementary level yesterday, and is already starting to think about how she can create a hub of technology resources for teachers, like how-to tutorials, or she's going to survey teachers, and we're going to try to do that at every level to see what people need. So I think this, the culture of sharing is building, I think we're getting better and better at it. You know, it is different than when school was in session, you know, teachers weren't sharing their Google classroom with everybody. It was more of like, they didn't need to, you know, it was more, we could have those conversations, we could meet in person, but now we're really just using them as a frame of reference to figure out, you know, what's happened during this time, because that's something that we're responsible for. We really need to know, you know, as a district, what we've put out at this time for our students, because that will then, you know, it's really going to shape our return. So it's important for us to stay up to date on that.
Right, thank you, guys. Thanks for the update.
Okay, I think Colleen was next. Can't hear you, you're still muted. There we go.
Thanks again to Cara and Lynn and Doug for the update. It's a lot of great information, I think, just a lot of clarity around some things that we haven't been able to discuss yet. A couple of things that I had concerns about, Amy had brought up, and Susie had asked about as well, so I think those were very well answered. There's a lot of, you know, obviously open-ended items. One of the questions I had about transitioning back when we do return to school was, I don't know if you're hearing, and this is an ongoing concern and development, I'm sure, but we obviously have been able to add more school adjustment counselors, and we're planning to with our new budget as well, however that might be affected, but I didn't know if you heard from the state, if they were going to be looking to try to support from a state level, adjustment counselors as needed in the schools, where we're going to be seeing more students, not just our students who receive services, who are on IEPs, but the way that I see it is almost like we, you have to almost look at every student like they're on an IEP, right? They're setting goals, there are long-term goals, there are short-term goals, there's quality versus quantity, you know, and really looking at zoning in on the layers within the quality. And just from my experience with my own student on IEP, there were very, very specific goals that helped him to be able to access his academics, and really hone in on the social emotional. So this piece is sort of just like, you know, when we have all our students coming back from what Doug described as a traumatic experience, are we going to be able to see some increases in support there, as much as we'll try to add, but also from the state? So I can just jump in in terms of, I'll defer to Doug and Christine, just in terms of, I think part of your question's related to funding, maybe additional funding or support, recovery from the state, so I'll defer on that piece. I do want to just, you know, in terms of our student support team in district through this closure, I just think they've done a lot of nice work of updating their website and providing resources to families and students. I know they put together a great video with different ideas for how students can support their social and emotional health during the closure. I know that they're doing teletherapy and checking in, and, you know, I think they've really stepped up during this time as best as they can to stay on top of their students who might need a little bit extra, but also check in with the students who might not, you know, demand as much. I think those are students that we equally have to be on top of, are the ones that, you know, are kind of more quiet and stay under the radar, just to keep our outreach going. So I know that that's the work that they're doing through the closure, but I think you're right on, Colleen, thinking about the return, that we're going to be, really need to be proactive in terms of how we're using our student support team across the district and proactively supporting all of our students, but also working with our teaching staff and thinking about, you know, additional training for, you know, how they will be receiving these students who've been through a really challenging time. So, you know, I don't know, Doug and Christine, if you have any more, I can't see everybody on mine, I have to scroll down.
Cara, can I just jump in for a minute?
Sure, Lynn, yeah.
So, I've been meeting with the school psychologists and the school adjustment counselors weekly. The nice thing is that the school adjustment counselors really focus mostly on students that are not on IEPs, but are on the edge, you know, and really, you know, they need a few sort of accommodations, they need some check-in, but they don't need, they don't need an IEP for that. And they've been staying in close contact. The funny thing is, I will tell you, at the older grades, the feedback that I've been getting is that some of our students who really had a hard time with school in general, and consumed a lot of time from our counseling and student support department, are doing really well, you know, at home, and engaging through sort of an online process and protocol, some are not. But the ability for some of our special education teachers, who have taken on some of our students who are walking that line as well, who are not quite special education, but need some extra, you know, extra something, our special education teachers have been checking in with them as well. And, you know, they work with them and to try to accomplish some of their assignments, so that it's nice for me to hear, and I think it's important for you to know, that even, you know, although they're not on a plan, and they're not on a grid, they are, you know, teachers and counseling staff, guidance counselors are picking up students that, you know, may need a little extra, whatever it is, to ensure that they feel supported during the school closure. Certainly, I haven't heard it from the special education world, that they will be supporting any extra, you know, positions or the like, but, you know, from the state, but we are very lucky. We have a robust department around school psychologists, school adjustment counselors, and guidance counselors. Again, you know, we can't underestimate the need when we return, but we really do have a nice department that works well together, and, you know, we have many hands that do that work. So, you know, oftentimes, when that many hands are in doing the work, it makes things go a little smoother, which is encouraging.
It's good to hear.
Can I just jump into, to talk about funding, Colleen? This really talks about what Doug was talking about, ending this year's budget really well and planning for next year's budget, because some of our priorities will have to be shifted.
Right.
We'll have to talk about shifting existing positions and planning about our priorities going into that new budget. In terms of extra funding, I mean, the state is asking us to give them an idea about what we've been spending due to the COVID-19 pandemic, but they're not making any guarantees or any promises, because they're talking about statewide cuts in the economy for next year. So I think we have to know, we can only budget for what we know, so we need to just kind of plan about what our priorities are for next year. And to take it to consideration, if we do have to relook at our budget and make any possible cuts, and make any alignments to what really our new priorities are, because, you know, we did our budget in February, and that was right before all of this happened. So we're having a lot of conversations about this moving forward.
Thank you.
Tom Markham was next, I think.
Hi, and yeah, thank you, Chris. So a lot of my questions or thoughts were covered by Amy and Susie and Colleen. So thanks, Cara and Lynn and Doug, for chiming in to react and respond to that. So sort of, you know, starting with Lynn's premise, that, you know, that virtual services are not going to equal, you know, in-person services, and that there are going to be, no matter how, whatever quality there is, and I'm not questioning the professionalism, the will of the talent of the spec staff at all, that's sure, there is going to be, I think, as a word that Doug may have used, you know, a gap or a need for assessing a new baseline, right? So the concern that I have, or the question, I guess, that I have around all of that isn't, isn't a landing in the same place where my colleagues' questions did, but landing in the question, not as much about the, our accountability from the teachers in terms of the delivery, but our accountability from, to the parents. That obviously we are going to have to, and maybe there's been some guidance, Lynn mentioned, communications from Russell Johnson and Desi, and so maybe there's already been some of this out there, but what is, what is communication? How do we feel that, you know, our capacity to deliver is diminished? Our capacity to stay on track with IEP standards and requirements is not going to be met? Not through lack of trying and energy and effort and love and all the right things that our team members are putting in a thousand percent? So it's not about that, but it is about that, as I think we've all landed in the same place, these kids are going to come back to us in September, hopefully, right? And in very different places than they were on March 12th, regardless of how much work has been done in 61, I mean, 61 days is a third of the school year, it's 33% of the school year, right, or whatever the percentage is. So my concern is around our capacity to deliver to the IEP standards, like, what is the accountability to parents? What is the state issuing any guidance around what our liability is going to be? Are we going to be rewriting my EPs, or realigning them in some way to meet, you know, what obviously is going to be a delay? So anyway, it's more the accountability piece that district will hold to the parents and to the kids, not as far as the district holding teachers accountable for doing the work, but just that our responsiveness and responsibility to make sure we're not, you know, overpromising, or over-hoping in our ability to actually provide some of these services, and to make sure that new baselines are realistic and timely. So, so I guess the question is, where do we stand with the liability and responsibility and legality around the IEP not very likely being able to be met?
Right. So the state recognizes that we cannot provide services exactly as they're written on service grids for students, but they have given us the guidance that we should plan for approximately, and this is not, again, this is general guidance, this is not a directive, this is them saying to us, you would be in good space if you, if you provide approximately half of the services that are on the student service delivery grid. So, you know, keeping in line with the commissioner's guidance around half the school day. So my guidance to the special education teachers has been that for C grid services, we are striving to provide approximately half the number of minutes that have been subscribed on their grid. Again, taking into account family situations, devices, so doing that in creative manners and documenting all of it. So we have two documents that we are working on. One, the state has issued guidance around remote learning plan for students, in which, again, the state has sort of been evolving with their guidance as this school closure has become more extended. And so the remote learning plan came out approximately two weeks prior to vacation, and it came out as sort of a, an idea. And it came out as sort of an idea. And then the week prior to vacation, it came out as an expectation. It was, the form that they developed, that the state developed was not a mandated form. But the state felt as though it was a district's responsibility to develop a remote learning plan for each one of their students in special education. So the special education teachers have been working this week to develop a remote learning plan for each student. This is not to replace the IEP. This is not to change the IEP. The parent doesn't need to give consent to it. We don't need to get a signature. This is just in the spirit of transparent communication and organizational planning so that if a schedule is set similar to what Kara talked about before, with weekly schedules coming out so that families can just anticipate when things are happening and plan their lives in a reasonable way. So we are asking providers to work together. The liaison is responsible for gathering all of the information, collaborating with related service providers so that everybody can put their their responsibility, their minutes on this chart and send out to parents. This is a fluid document because there are pieces that may change from now until June. We tried to make it as user-friendly as possible so that parents would understand in general when things were happening. But that it would allow teachers to be able to get to all of the students on their caseload. So we have that document that we are working on and our hope is that we will have them finished by Friday. And that we will send them with a narrative sort of cover, like letter, email type thing to the families so that they can understand what teachers are are working on each week with their student. Those plans talk about goal areas, about services, and about frequency. So there's that piece that hopefully will sort of align us to our responsibilities relative to the IEP. During this time of school closure, the state has said that we are not altering IEPs to reflect the school closure time. So the IEP stands as it was before this time until we get back into school unless there is an annual review meeting or there was an eligibility meeting that was able to be held to, you know, as we would if we were in school. Then that document still would be written as if we were in school. Services would be recommended as such and we would present that. Again, those services would not be, you know, the exact services that a student would receive while doing remote learning. Second, to the remote learning plan, we are keeping a documentation log of the lesson that a staff member provided to a student, the date, what time, what goal focus area, you know, whether it was a group lesson or individual lesson, whether it was an email pushout lesson, whether it was a video recorded, sent out, whether it was a phone call, or an interactive lesson. So those documents are being kept. But we do recognize that, you know, every single one of our students in Wakefield Public Schools is going to, you know, suffer some kind of setback with their academic world as they enter next September. But some of our more complex students who have very different needs, that we will see that regression in different ways. So there will be, even with, you know, even with, as you said, Tom, you know, the love, the care, the effort, the will, all of those pieces, we can't replicate everything. And we will need to individually meet, people will come together as part of a team meeting and discuss perhaps additional services that a particular student might need due to this, the 61 days plus, that services look different. I don't know if I answered all of your questions.
No, thank you. I thank you very much. That was very thorough, Lynn, and I appreciate not only just the long answer, but the thorough answer, especially your concluding point. Concluding point being that we're going to land where we need to at an IEP, you know, table, you know, around the table with everyone that has vested interest in the student and make sure the best thing happens moving forward. So thank you for that. Thanks for the explanation.
Important piece to stress is, I know Lynn texted on this at the end of her comments, is we are anticipating that student services, academic services, counseling services, you know, support in and out of the classroom is going to increase when we return to school across the board. And so, and I know we're not alone in kind of planning for that and forecasting that. I know that I think all districts, certainly in our surrounding area and across the state, are kind of hunkering down and planning for that. The challenge for us in kind of thinking about that creatively is how do we do that in a flexible way while we're also hearing in parallel that budgets are shrinking? And so that's something that is going to be a theme that you're going to hear from us. And we're going to be working on collaboratively with you all for the next couple of years.
I think Tom Flynn was next.
Hi, guys. Most of my questions have already been answered. Mostly, I have the same basic questions as Colleen and Tom, but I had just a couple of ones, one for Lynn and one for Kara. They're very straightforward and quick answers, I'm sure. Lynn, have you been able to conduct, actually conduct and have your IEP meetings? And Kara, as far as your brainstorming meetings, I know teachers have to be online for two to three hours each day for all the students. Are they able to change that schedule to accommodate so they can go to the brainstorming meetings or is that part of their two to three hours?
So Lynn, do you want me to go first or do you want to go first?
I can, I'll go because it's quick.
Yeah.
We have had many, many, many IEP meetings and they've been, most of the feedback has been really good. We have had a couple IEP meetings where, you know, the special education coordinator or the liaison just felt as though there was so much material to cover and so many people, and this can be a hard forum, that, you know, before the end of the school year, you know, discussion happened, they were going to wait until we resumed school. However, now that we are out through the end of the school year, those meetings will be scheduled as well. The only ones we are not able to conduct are meetings that would have been eligibility meetings, like reevaluation meetings or newer initial asks from, for certain students because the face-to-face testing wasn't complete before the school closure. So that's disappointing because those students are still waiting to be tested. We are also talking with our student support team, you know, the school psychs and our special education teachers about how we can possibly do that a little differently when we get back into school. You know, do we establish, and you know, this is in the brainstorming, you know, section right now, this is not something that we've determined, but, you know, do we establish something like an evaluation team so that we can, you know, really get through that backlog of evaluations in a timely way so the kids get services that they might need? So we're looking at those things. But all the other meetings have been taking place, which is very exciting, and it's had a lot of good feedback.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I can just jump in in terms of the brainstorming meetings and planning meetings. So basically, it's challenging, I think, to find, we're operating on a different schedule than we would if school were in session in terms of like a block schedule or teacher planning time. I think teachers are all working on, you know, slightly different schedules based on their students' needs and the families' needs. So it is, and I know that as a district, we've decided not to say, you know, school will only, you know, be in session from this amount to this.
Ten to twelve or whatever.
Yeah, so I think the way we've looked at the brainstorming meetings is, you know, we presented, we know that teachers have a ton on their plate right now, and so we're really trying to always constantly come from a place of like support and putting it out as optional, like there's no, you know, mandatory attendance. It's really more so because what we envision happening is teachers really doing the bulk of the talking at those meetings and talking with one another. So I'm hopeful that they'll find them really helpful. So what we've done as a start is we did think it was important, though, to have them be at a consistent time each week. So we booked times on Tuesdays and Wednesdays in half-hour chunks per grade level, more so in the afternoon because we thought that that might be a better time, particularly at the elementary level, if teachers want to check in with their kids more so in the morning. So, but I think we're going to take it as it goes. I met with the elementary principals and the coaches and our curriculum coordinator this morning, and we were saying, you know, we really just have to get the first one off the ground and then we'll tweak. And if we get feedback that that time's not great for a certain grade level, I think we're all in positions that we can be a little bit more flexible. So we'll move it as we can.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anne?
Just a real quick perspective of someone who's in the trenches, kind of thrown into this particular situation without any preparation. I want to sort of go back and think about our values as a district and how we want to use the concept of growth mindset, right? So we want to make sure that we, we know that there'll be regression and we know that kids won't be moving as quickly as they ordinarily would. But everybody moves at their own pace regardless of whether there's a pandemic or not. And we're just, we just want to get our students from one point to the next point, right? We want them to grow. And I think if we can also sort of apply that concept to the teachers and the staff as we sort of navigate this process. Because we, unlike sort of learn anywhere where I think, you know, there was some training and planning, but that was really for just a sort of brief period of time and wasn't, you know, learning new material necessarily. It was really just a opportunity for kids to continue their learning while they were out of school for a couple of days. But boy, it's, when you're, when you're sort of faced with all of a sudden, you know, I find myself sort of pretty tech savvy, but it's sort of managing a whole new platform, doing things so differently and learning about the technology kind of on the fly. Where I am now versus where I was six weeks ago is kind of light years. I never thought I'd be creating a tutorial that is now, you know, what we're showing to our kids on how to complete the Common Application or using technology in such a variety of ways. So I think if we sort of, you know, think about how we as a district are moving forward and then kind of allow that concept of growth mindset to take place with moving teachers forward and moving, and of course, moving the kids forward, I'm going to feel, I'm feeling pretty good, you know, about how we're moving along. And there'll be definitely lots of things, probably we're better at some things than other people are, but I suspect that all of our teachers and staff and counselors, et cetera, are doing the best they can, you know, under the circumstances.
Thank you. Amy, you had one quick question?
Yes, I do, for Lynn. I was just wondering for our kids who are on IEPs, you know, can there be some, because I lost the audio again, so I apologize if you had already answered this question, but could there be any, like, check-ins over the summer with, like, the team or kind of, you know, with, yeah, like kind of with the students' team to see if, you know, everybody before school begins, you deal with issues, suggestions, concerns, and then work together to try and make the transition a little easier as the student comes in? I'm just wondering if that was talked about and I missed it.
So I didn't talk about check-ins over the summer, but I did talk about, we have a lot of consents that have come in for evaluations and those students are in that sort of eligibility track, but we can't move because the face-to-face testing hasn't taken place. So we've talked about, we've brainstormed things like maybe creating an evaluation team so that over the summer, you know, whenever we're released and, you know, and able to do that face-to-face work again, you know, we can come together and really move on that testing so that kids get what they need when they need it instead of waiting until the next, until September to do that. There's pros and cons to that. Summer, which we recognize, you know, on one hand, we don't know how quickly students are going to sort of catch up in the fall. And we want to give them that opportunity to do that before we really evaluate where they are and look at if it's a disability or sort of an environmental regression. We want to make sure that we really know from where that weakness is stemming. But certainly, you know, the check-ins, to be honest with you, when this first started and the guidance came out about sort of additional services and needs and planning for students when we got back to school, you know, we were talking about it for really May and June, you know, that we would be able to come back together. We could sort of, you know, teachers who had had students already, we could sort of assess what, you know, what they lost in that, you know, shorter week closure and be able to plan for what they needed over the summer as part of like, sort of a, to bump them up. And in the fall, well, now that we've been extended for the rest of the school year, we're still in that sort of cycle of, you know, they are, they are still at a deficit from the, you know, the forward progress standpoint because they are not in the classroom. So I don't know, you know, we can talk about it, it's certainly an idea. You know, can we make that judgment in the summer when they're not back into their routine yet and they have that that luxury really, now we don't really, we didn't really realize it was a luxury to be in school with our kids, with our teachers. But even when they're back in school with that luxury of being surrounded in that academically rich environment. But we can talk about that, too. That's something to think about. I mean, because, yeah, I mean, there's pros and cons because you want to plan appropriately for when kids get back, but you also want them to be their best selves when you're looking at what they need. So we can think about it.
Okay. Very detailed discussion, I think. Is there any more in the meal plan, Doug? Or have you already covered that?
I think we already covered that, Chris.
Yeah, okay, I think the lady's covered it, I wanted to be sure. Moving on to our budget items, we have an intermunicipal agreement on the table for our food service director. Christine, have any comments?
First, I just want to echo the comments that Doug made about our staff for food services. What they're doing on a weekly basis is quite phenomenal. And I just want to applaud them for what they're doing for our Wakefield families. But what we have before you tonight is the intermunicipality agreement between Reading and Wakefield to continue the agreement to share the food service director services between Wakefield and Reading. It's basically a renewal of the agreement we had in place already. It's another three-year agreement. Do you have any questions?
I do, but I let other people go first. Anybody else? Okay, could you just, just for the public's benefit, okay? The, this agreement, is it really drafted by Reading and then we're just kind of going along with it? How involved are we in setting this up?
So we're renewing the agreement that was already in place, but it was drafted between Reading and Wakefield. But Reading hires the director, so she's technically on the Reading payroll. And we share her services and we pay a portion of her salary and a portion of the benefits and her membership to school nutrition associations, memberships, et cetera. and her membership to school nutrition associations, memberships, et cetera. It gets voted on by Wakefield School Committee, Wakefield Town Council, as well as Reading's School Committee and their Board of Selectmen.
And who set the pay scale?
So, it's a 50/50 share of the salary and all the benefits.
So, can I?
Go ahead.
The scale was, I think it's been in place, and I think it's just been increased every year. But, you ask a great question, but one of the things that I think it's important for everyone to know is that the IMA that's presented from Reading, we don't have to agree to, in fact, we, the increase that was given this year, we had some questions about, and I think that we collaborated with Reading, and we made an adjustment.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Right. And so, so it's not kind of a blind ask, like Reading sends this to us and we sign off blindly. That's not the case.
No, but her salary is in line with other food service directors in the Commonwealth.
It just, you know, I'm torn, and, you know, I've talked to Doug and you, Christine, about this, I'm not blindsiding anybody, but I feel as though like, the salary for the position is high. And yet, because it's a shared position, it's still lower than we would hire a single person on our own to cover. So, it's in our best interest, in my opinion, to go ahead and agree to this IMA, but I'm really not happy about the, I feel like the job could be done at a lower pay scale. I see a couple of nods there. Any other comments? Suzie?
Just for clarity's sake, Christine, you made it sound like the numbers that we saw on the contract include salary, benefits, and association kind of fees, correct?
Right.
Oh, and travel, okay. So, it's a fully loaded number that we're looking at.
We're splitting the total cost of a food service director. So, salary, benefits, membership, association, fees, travel, et cetera.
Chris, am I not allowed to say the number? Can I, can I just say it, or should I not?
It's a public document.
Yeah, okay. So, the number, if I remember correctly, Christine, was something around 70-ish, right? Is our portion.
For next year, yes.
For next year, yeah. There were three numbers, and there's an increase over, each year over, right? You're talking about $140,000, but that is covering off.
Exactly.
On benefits, and we don't, do we know what the breakdown is of what those, the benefits percentage and the kind of associations and like, and travel, like, what that looks like?
The base salary I asked, and I was told it was $119.
Good.
Yeah.
Having met Danielle, she's pretty impressive.
I have not met her yet.
Yeah, so I have had the pleasure of meeting her, and she is really impressive and really progressive in her thinking and the conversations that I've had with her about kind of food rescue and composting and recycling, and she, yes, she's very impressive. I really think she's a great asset to our.
Also on the Board for School Nutrition Association, she has contacts in Boston, she has contacts in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. Her resume is quite impressive.
But, to me, it's not about a person, it's about a position.
The benefit of having this, though, is we couldn't afford, with the current structure of food nutrition in Wakefield, to afford this position on our own.
I get it. I said that, too. I says, you know, it's in our best interest to do it, but I think, combined, we're still overpaying for the positions, Mike. But, I'm still going to vote in favor of it, because I think it's in Wakefield's best interest to move forward, especially with the forecast for next year, and, you know, we have other things to focus on saving money on. So, are there any other questions, or should we get a motion on this IMA? Amy?
Move that the committee approve the food service director municipal agreement and Reading Public Schools as presented. Could you hear me?
We broke up, I think we got it.
Second.
Nice, sorry, I'm not sitting in this room at our next meeting.
Second by Tom Flynn. Judy? Judy, you're muted.
Mr. Mackham?
Yes.
Ms. Fordyler?
Yes.
Ms. Vayer?
Yes.
Ms. Brussell?
Yes.
Ms. Cameron?
Yes.
Ms. Gruder?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Okay, so that is a unanimous vote to accept this intermunicipal agreement that authorizes Doug to sign it, and we should be good for three years. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, subcommittee reports. Finance facilities met a couple of weeks ago. We're going to meet again this Thursday morning via a Zoom meeting. Some of the discussions we're having are revolving around, sorry, in the minutes, are revolving around the, the school buses and services that we're able to pay for, what services we can now pay for. We're in a collaboration with eight, I believe, eight other communities, right, Doug? Total of nine, so, and the, we're negotiating a settled amount with NRT to, to pay for what, that would be the remainder of this year, and to be sure that they are going to be available come September when we need them. So, we'll have further discussions on Thursday about that, and also start planning for any cuts or adjustments we're going to have to plan, be ready for in the, in the fall. Anything new with labor?
I know, thank you. No, we, the labor subcommittee hasn't met since our last meeting. The only thing that's been going on is what Doug reported on earlier with regard to the agreement with the.
The MOU?
Well, with WA Unabated C on services during the virus, so.
Okay. Student services? Anything?
Thank you. No, I have nothing to report, but I do hope to schedule a future meeting soon. Thank you.
Okay, and policy and communications?
Yeah, we have not met and do not plan to meet unless there's kind of a reason to do so.
Okay. Future dates, agenda items, our next virtual meeting, unfortunately, I think is going to continue, May 12, 7:30. The Zoom invite will go out. In the meantime, anything for a public comment can be sent to myself or to Doug, any public participation going into that meeting. School committee comments? Everybody set, or anybody want to raise a hand? I'd rather call all the names. Looks like we're good to go. Motion to adjourn?
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of April 28, 2020.
Second.
Second.
Judy?
Mr. Mackham?
Yes.
Ms. Fordyler?
Yes.
Ms. Vayer?
Yes.
Ms. Brussell?
Yes.
Ms. Cameron?
Yes.
Ms. Gruder?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Okay, well, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your time, it's a long one, and we'll talk soon. Everybody be safe.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, good night.